Welcome and good evening. I am the acting chair tonight. Please don't be confused, it's just an act. Oh, I gotta read this whole thing. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and on Facebook, on the public access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after this meeting. Following information is also provided for members of the public that would like to participate in the meeting remotely. To participate remotely from a computer, please use the link below to join the public meeting webinar. HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash US zero two web dot zoom dot US forward slash J forward slash eight eight one nine nine one six three nine five four. Or from a telephone, dial the toll-free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine and enter webinar ID eight eight one nine nine one six three nine five four. Again, webinar ID eight eight one nine nine one six three nine five four. If you have not registered with Zoom, you will be asked for your name and an email address. Note, no participant ID is needed, just press pound when asked. Telephone users may dial star nine to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. This meeting hearing will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technical problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Apparently it's too late if you haven't done so already. So we are calling to order at six oh three or so. Any public comment? Any public, any raised hands?
No.
Any board comment? I have a comment. This is ridiculous. I do not intend to ever come back here and wear a goddamn mask, okay? Just being very clear about that. A and R plans, forty-four Northfield Road. Step up, please. Welcome, good evening.
To the microphone, please.
Yep, to the microphone, state your name and address and give us-
I'm Harrison, nine thirteen Northfield Road, Lunenburg, Masa one four six two.
Welcome.
Timothy Sullivan, fifteen fifty Center Road, Lineboro, New Hampshire, oh three oh eight two.
Okay, very good, thank you. Just give us a little description of what's going on.
Yeah, so forty-four Northfield is an existing Cape style house, and it has plenty of frontage and forty thousand, over forty thousand square feet additional to the house, square footage to create a new A and R lot, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, so that's next to Barney's. Sit next to it, okay. And they do in fact have the required frontage in area, correct, Adam?
They do.
So I don't see any issues with it. Does Paula have her packet?
I, I, I have the electronic copy.
Okay, very good.
Uh, so-
Go ahead.
I was just gonna make a motion if nobody had any comments, but if someone has comments, I'll wait.
Any comments?
I do just have a A comment. I was contacted by the owner of the abutting property, and this property had been in their family previously. They indicated that the sewer service for number forty-four comes through the area about where you have the opening for the driveway for the new lot. So I, I don't, it doesn't affect this process, it was more information that someone communicated to me that they were concerned you would run into a problem with when you go to pull your sewer permits, that's all gonna get flushed out through there, but just information, and that, that individual may try and reach out to you at some point.
Great.
Yep. If need be easements or whatever.
And, and I mean that, you can work that out with the sewer department.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with this process, though. This is just subdividing the land.
Correct.
This, yeah, this is actually at your own risk. So if, if the building department decides, or somebody decides that it's not buildable, it's, it's just wasted time, basically, but-
Right.
Okay, very good. Paula, you wanna make that motion?
I would make a motion to approve the A and R for North, forty-four Northfield Road.
Second.
Second, very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote, Mrs. Bertram.
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson.
Aye.
An aye for myself. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Do we still get the Mylar?
I only have two signatures here, so-
Okay.
They'll sign it at the end of the meeting, I'll contact Mrs. Bertram to come in and do the final signature, and we'll let you know.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great evening. Next on our agenda is forty-one forty-seven Reservoir Road, a re-sign of an A and R.
Good evening.
Hi there.
I'm Marchetti, McCarty Engineering. We were before you a year ago for this same parcel. It was approved, it's a twenty-four acre plus or minus piece that we subdivided into two lots with one common drive, so two estate lots. The owner picked up the Mylar after it was endorsed, and he has since lost it, so it was never recorded, so we're asking for another copy be signed so we can take and get recorded.
It's a good deal for you, right?
Perfect, yep.
So you're gonna tell us that there's not a single change on it, right?
Not a single change.
Okay, so we've got you on record saying that there's not a single change, we don't have to scrutinize it?
Been overlaid over the signed copy and-
Yeah.
Yep.
Any concerns?
I didn't sign it the first time.
No, you didn't.
It is not really relevant.
Yeah. Mrs. Bertram, are you with us?
Sorry, I was muted. Um, no, I don't have any issues with, with resigning it.
Okay. I think we still need a motion, though, don't we? Or do we not?
Oh.
You can make the motion to re-sign it, that's fine.
Better safe than sorry.
Yeah, it never hurts.
I would make a motion to refund the plan for Reservoir Road.
Well, seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call, Mrs. Bertram.
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson.
Aye.
An aye for myself. Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody, by, by the way.
I thought you got that out of the way with your original comments.
Oh, you're well, I wasn't very happy. Okay, so next on our agenda is appointment. Lunenburg Central, A and B, request for de minimis change and B, tree cutting follow-up.
They kinda can run together.
Okay, are you presenting for them?
Uh, no, Mr. Hannigan is here for the de minimis change and I'll-
Oh, I, I keep forgetting about the online people. Very good. Mr. Hannigan.
How are you?
Good evening.
Good evening to you. So Adam brings up the, the first plan. As part of the due diligence for the purchase title review of the project, there's a, a section of land towards the rear of the property adjacent to the, to the railroad that was formerly owned by the railroad, and that's kinda showing that dash line that kinda comes from the, the northwest on an angle, and then parallel to the railroad, then kinda heads off into the, into the northeast or the east more than anything. And one of the provisions in that, from way back when, there was, there was a, a host of provisions, but one of them was that the, the, that no structures be built on that property without basically permission from the railroad. And we did a, a grading plan, basically to get the grading to conform to that requirement, but we added a retaining wall on the backside of the, of the parking area, or the, or the driveway area behind the, the northwest corner of the building. So the, the first part is to, is to change the grading in the back to get out of, there's two, there's two, two provisions. One is nothing to, no work or grading to be done within thirty feet of the MBTA line, that's the red dash line, and the second was the removal of any structures, or not to build any structures within that, that parcel two, as it's known, on, on the plan. Now, Adam, I did send you over a de minimis change plan that was updated from this one, this one's dated December thirteenth, and I sent you over one, I believe dated the sixth of January, maybe the fifth.
It's not in my packet, give me a sec.
I, I can bring it up if you, if you'd like.
While he's working on that-
It's not gonna do you any good, you won't be able to, uh-
Is she with you?
Oh, January sixth, there you go.
Mr. Hannigan, I have a question about this. Is this something, a, a, a right that was given by the previous property owners to the MBTA?
No, it, it's actually when the, it wasn't the exact, well, I guess part of it was heirs, heirs of the, of the current owners, but when the railroad sold, sells land in general, they can put any restrictions on it that they wish. So one of them is the, the, the issue with the, this, okay, so let me break it down into two things, they're two different documents. The, the red dash line that's thirty feet off of the property line from the MBTA, that's an MBTA guidance document that's on, that's on file with the Department of Transportation, apparently, or somewhere, the, the title attorney's found that. So that's a current document that basically just talks about any work done within thirty feet of any line that, that is operated by the MBTA. It has its provisions of, of basically to not have any work done within that thirty-foot setback.
Within the line?
So the first change-
Within the line or the property? I mean, this-
From the prop, from thirty feet from the property line, so they have control over your property for an additional thirty feet of what, of what they don't own.
That's ridiculous.
That's a, that's not an unusual comment on this, this subject, but unfortunately, what we have to do is kind of adhere to that. So we adjusted the grading in the back of, of the lot to get out of that thirty-foot buffer, which required the installation of a, of a retaining wall in that northwest corner of the site. In the previous plan, that wall extended into the, into the, that parcel two that is shown on the plan, which is the da, the black dash line that kind of is about a hundred feet or so off of the railroad, and on this, this change that we made on the sixth, this plan basically is just pulling that retaining wall out of that dash line. So if you see the rate where your hand was, go to the top of the wall, the dash line that goes east-west, keep on going back and forth on it, that's the wall, yeah.
Yeah, this is the wall here, right? The hand is moving along the wall.
Right, and the dash line, there's a dash line that's black and, that's black and white, right, right where you're, right where the, nope. Okay, move north, now east, north and east. Little further, little further, right there, see that little dash line? That's the, the boundary of the parcel that we're talking about.
Oh, I see, yeah.
The one that kinda comes left to right. So we can't put any structures within that parcel, and a retaining wall would be considered a structure. So the December plan showed the wall extending further into that by about ten feet, and then this plan basically shows the wall being constructed not within that area. And that basically with this de minimis change being approved by the planning board, it'll allow us to redo the grading to stay out of that thirty-foot offset, and to build the retaining wall to make it the grade so that we don't get graded to the one slope, which is what has been recommended by Jeff Walsh from Graves. So that's, that's the essence of the whole de minimis change.
I'm having a hard time locating the retaining wall on the currently approved plan.
There isn't one on the currently approved-
There isn't, yeah, exactly.
So because, because they couldn't do work within that thirty feet, the grading needed to come closer to the building, they couldn't make the grading chasing that grade work in a reasonable way with the pass-through of the driveway, so they added the retaining wall to allow for grading to happen, that would allow them to cut the slope back to the point they needed to cut it back.
So what does this do to that barrier?
To what barrier?
The barrier that was agreed upon.
Nothing, it retains height.
Got to the other side, got to the other side of the property. You're talking about the noise barrier?
That's on the other side of the property.
Stay on. It is shown in that plan.
Where is it shown? Can you bring that back up, Adam?
So the retaining wall runs from, here's the parcel line.
Mm-hmm.
So it runs from about here, across the curve, and then it turns here, I'm, I'm assuming this is a structural thing to keep it in place.
And if you zoom out, I think the question is where is this in relation to the sound barrier wall?
Sound barrier is here.
Okay, what does this do, the turning radius for the trucks?
Doesn't change anything, we didn't change any of the pavement at all.
Okay.
And that's why they needed the wall in order to continue to have the same travel path around the building.
Okay, so this doesn't alter the travel path?
Correct.
No, there's no changes to pavement at all. I'm, I'll take that back. Adam, you see where the dot is, where we label the, the landowner?
It's here?
Right there, yeah. We eliminated three trailer parking spots in that area because we had to pull the grading towards, towards the south, away from the railroad tracks. So there were, there were three trailer spots in that area that had been eliminated.
So it reduces pavement but continues to enjoy the same turning radius?
So the new plan doesn't show the water line, because I noticed there's a hydrant that's not shown, and then I'm realizing that whole layer is off.
Yes.
No, the water, the water line's there.
There's a hydrant shown on the previous plan that's not shown on this new plan, and the lines coming to and going from.
I'm, I'm looking at the plan on the screen right now, and it's shown on the one on the screen.
Why would that be different than the copy that I have?
I, I, I don't know if they were printed from the same document. Is that the one that, are you saying the one December, December one or the January one?
Where's the, um, where's the, the hydrant?
Hydrant is, well, it's not there, but it's here.
Along that edge there?
I don't see any water on this plan.
The curse is right on the water line.
Yeah, there's a water line here, and a hydrant.
It, it might not be on that plan, this is the, the January sixth one-
Okay.
-that was sent out after.
This is the problem that I have with these de minimis changes, is the plans are different.
Pickle.
We've got two different situations, we've got two different plans-
Mm-hmm.
-for the de minimis change.
The, the change for the, that requesting is nothing to do with the utilities, it's really only about the grading. The, the utilities would all revert back to the approved plan.
What about your drainage? Did you revise the drainage calculations?
No drains revised, need to be revised on the, on the plan. If anything, as said earlier, we have less impervious area and we have less land clearing.
Has this de minimis change been forwarded to Jeff Walsh?
Jeff has seen it, we did not get a formal review on it, he has said it makes sense, and he did not indicate any issues that he saw.
I, I think I'd like to wait for Jeff's formal review, which is my personal opinion, there's two others here.
As would I, I would like to have something from Jeff, even if it's an email stating that he's reviewed the plan and he has no issues with it, and then I would have no problem signing it.
Yeah, that, Adam, doesn't that email already exist?
Uh, I don't have an issue with the concept of pulling back the proposed grade near the MBTA line, maintaining two horizontal, one vertical maximum slope, including the retaining wall, looks to be two to six feet high as shown on the plan.
That's great, I'd like to have him spend maybe whatever long it takes him to look at the plan and review it as our review engineer, instead of having us here for five minutes checking the plan and finding differences between different plans.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm saying this is, this is what he sent when he got the, the plan and, and did his cursory review.
That's good, that's good.
I just would like, because we don't have a copy of that, and because I'm not, because we have the conflict in the plans, I would feel better if we actually had something from Jeff referencing the correct plan and noting if there's any, he says in concept he doesn't have a problem, but as Matt has said, I think it's important that he take a look at the actual plan and make sure there are no changes to the drainage calcs, et cetera.
Adam, can we request that Jeff be present at the next meeting as well?
Whoa.
You don't have it?
Oh, I do, but, see, that's dated, oh, January sixth, I've, no, I don't have January sixth.
And then there you go, see, but it does show the argument.
Oh, look at that. That's January sixth. Okay, no, still, I'd like our review engineer to-
I'll have Jeff review it, and I'll have him come to the next meeting.
Super. And I don't think he really needs to be at the next meeting, just have a, a formal review.
Well, the person who's paying his bill is asked that he-
Okay.
-show up, so-
Perfect.
I probably wouldn't have asked him to come, but since Bill's client is writing the check, I'm happy-
Sure.
For-
Sounds good.
For him to be invited.
Are we all good with that?
Uh, yeah, and I'll just follow up, I'll do the second part of that. The tree cutting at the curve by Reservoir Road was completed per the approval. Tree and veget, trees and vegetation were cleared twenty feet from the edge of pavement on that curve. It, there's certainly less vegetation there, I'm not sure how much it increases site distance, but the work was done per, per the approval as, as requested.
Yep. Excellent, I will drive by, oh, pictures, look at that. Coming around the corner, find a yook in the middle of the road. Okay, are we good on that, uh, agenda item?
Yeah, and based on the pictures, I appreciate the work that you did, and it looks like you, you complied with the request, so I appreciate that.
So are we ready to move on? Do we need any further action?
Uh, we do not. Okay.
Mr. Hannigan, are you-
Do we need to continue this?
Well, just, just a question, because of the fact that we have a closing coming up on the land, we're just wondering if the board would entertain approving it subject to Jeff's approval, because I, I think, I think that the change is, is right in line with everything that we, we discussed with Jeff on this, because originally we had a grade going greater than two to one, and he said he would want some sort of a geotechnical review, and then from there we, we put the retaining wall in, because we have other retaining walls on the site that we have to design prior to construction, and it would be good if we could just get the board's acknowledgement that there's been a change and that it's a, if they could approve it subject to the final approval and, and, um, final review and approval by Jeff Walsh for the, on behalf of the planning board, that would help us out.
My understanding is we can't, we can't do that, we can't approve contingent upon the approval of something else, is that correct, Adam?
You can't contingent upon the approval of another body or board. You're approving the concept, and if you say that pending a sound engineering review, you can do that because it's an objective as opposed to subjective, or you're not ceding your power, you're saying that the technical aspects need to meet the requirements of your peer review engineer, it's not an uncommon thing for planning boards to do.
When is the closing, Bill?
Um, I don't know, there are, Peter is on, Peter Mahoney's on, maybe he'll address that.
Yeah, Peter Mahoney with John Corcoran Company, we're scheduled for a week from today, I believe, the, a week from tomorrow, sorry. It's Tuesday. Yeah, we can choose that, this is Tim Brennan, sorry.
So that will be after our meeting? I mean, before our meeting?
Before your meeting, yeah.
So I, I honestly don't have a problem as long as we can, we can approve the de minimis change contingent upon a satisfactory review by our reviewing engineer.
Satisfactory, I don't remember what the word you used was, but-
I mean satisfactory, compliance with the technical, I mean, it, it's fine. Having a clean review letter would be how I would say it, having all potential outstanding issues satisfied for engineering review.
That assumes that we're gonna be able to get that review letter back within a week?
No, I think what that assumes is that they won't get a building permit on this plan until Jeff has reviewed it and said he's satisfied with the engineering of that grading.
So they're gonna close regardless?
And what I take away from this is that Corcoran and Brennan groups are comfortable that they will be willing and able to make any necessary technical engineering changes, and are willing to spend their money to purchase the property, granted that the planning board is willing to allow them to make those changes in a sound engineering way. I don't wanna speak for them, but that's, that's what I take away from, from that, they're willing to spend the money knowing that this change as a concept isn't an issue, and they're willing to work out the technical details.
Okay. I guess I'm comfortable with that, you comfortable with that?
So, so I'm gonna make an actual motion, I would make a motion to approve the de minimis change contingent upon a review by our engineering, a peer review engineer to ensure compliance with sound engineering practices.
Second, moved and seconded, very good. Any further discussion? All in favor, roll call vote, Mrs. Bertram.
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson.
Aye.
An aye for myself. Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate working with us on this.
All right, so that's, 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 moving right along.
Is this you, the next one?
Yeah. Are you here for Cross Street? Yeah, okay, so I was gonna jump to you next, but, so ninety-seven Cross Street, one twenty-five Cross Street, four thirty Mopas Road, and four forty Mopas Road, continued from twelve thirteen, is this a public hearing?
Yes, it is. But I mean, you've already read the notice, you don't need to re-read it.
Yes, yes, it's a public hearing, continued.
So Brian Marchetti from McCarty Engineering. We were here back on December thirteenth for this project. It is a parcel on the corner of Cross Street and Mopas Road. It was one master parcel that had previously been subdivided through the A and R process into five separate lots. One existing house remained on a new lot, and there were four new family residential lots to be designed. We showed the plan for the four proposed lots, this is for stormwater permit. We showed the plan for the four proposed lots, this is for stormwater permit, um, they were reviewed by Jeff Walsh, he came back with a few comments, uh, since December 13th, we have submitted, uh, we've gone back and forth with Mr. Walsh, and submitted a final set of plans dated, uh, January 3rd, that he has reviewed, and he's submitted a response letter, his final comment letter, saying he's, he's okay with all the changes that were made. So, if you, we can go through the individual comments if you'd like, or I can just kind of glance over.
Miss Bertram has her hand up.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I don't have a copy of Jeff's final review letter, I have the response to comments, but I don't have a copy of the final Graves engineering letter.
So was that January, that was gonna be my next comment, so we're all on the same page, are we looking at January 4th being his final review comment?
It came in and went out.
The letter and the received are both Jan. 4th. Is, is, is that the final one?
I have, I have, in my email dated January 5th, I have the response to comments and, um, from McCarty Engineering, and then I have a copy of the draft decision, but I don't have the Graves letter, so my question would be if, Adam, if you can put the Graves letter up.
I'm putting it up right now.
Yeah, so, letter dated January 4th.
Yeah, it came in on the 4th, I thought it was in your packets.
Can you, wait one second, I wanna read number two. Okay, that was my question. Okay, so he does not have any outstanding issues?
He does not have any outstanding, no.
Okay, and the piston diaphragms he's okay with?
Uh, yeah, they're the same as they were on 150 Holman, which Jeff was okay with it there as well.
Okay, and the ground, and the groundwater elevation, my understanding is you relocated the dry wells to maintain that two foot offset based on the, on your comments that I saw.
Yes, yep.
So really, he had a couple of comments, really just with respect to how the dry wells were modeled in HydroCAD, and the location of groundwater at a couple of the dry wells, so we just shifted those into fill a little bit more to make sure we had at least two feet of separation of groundwater to the bottom of the dry wells.
Okay.
And then Paula, one of your, your comments at the, the last meeting was with respect to the operation and maintenance of the rain gardens, uh, with respect to vegetation pruning of dead, dead trees and debris, uh, we did, we did add within the operation and maintenance plan a provision to replace whatever.
Okay, great, great.
And that is, and that was all.
Excellent, looks like you've got your I's and T's.
Adam, do you have the operation and maintenance plan, just out of curiosity?
It's within the appendices of the stormwater report.
Yeah, do you know what page it starts on, Brian?
And I did, no, I opened right up to it, it's, hmm. It's, it's one of the pages, I can't, I don't have the hard copy, I don't have the electronic, but it's right after the TSS removal spreadsheets. And it is right before the stormwater, master EP stormwater checklist.
I think it's gonna be quite a bit farther than that.
I can read to you the specific.
Oh, unless you just have all the calcs at the end, maybe you just have the calcs at the end.
That's, it's before the HydroCAD calcs.
Okay.
So if you're in the HydroCAD printouts, you're too far.
That's where I was.
I'm gonna start making you guys do searchable.
I was just gonna ask, it's not searchable?
I'm talking about with the, um, whatchamacallit off on the side there.
All right, keep going.
The, uh, table of contents.
Just, just before this checklist, so, right, in the one before, right here, so, there's the ONM plan, the second page references the rain gardens, next page.
Okay, slow down, can you go back up to that piston diaphragm? Okay, should be replaced on an as-needed basis, or must be replaced?
Well, it's, the diaphragm is like a forbey, it only has to be replaced when it's choked with sediment and debris.
Okay.
If there's a significant amount of salting and sanding you're doing in your driveway, and the, the stones get choked, you replace it.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
So, the, the rain garden, the very last bullet, rain garden shall be mulch fertilized, dead vegetation removed and pruned once a year, dead vegetation shall be immediately replaced, and that's, um.
Okay, great. I'm not gonna make a big deal out of this time, um, and I'm fine with this, but in the future, when you're doing it, I would really prefer the word must, um, there's a big controversy on documents, whether the word shall really means must, and so the, the advice is, the legal advice is to use the word must.
Any other questions?
I don't have any other questions, do you?
No, sir.
So Paula, are you good with this?
I'm good.
Okay, would, would you like to make the motion?
I am, I'm trying to pull it up.
I just wanna pull up the decision so I can type it in as we do it. You guys moved through that a lot quicker than I thought you were gonna.
Well, we had some questions, and you answered them, so that's, you know, you do your work, we'll do ours, and it works out well.
And I did review the draft's decision, and I didn't have any concerns.
Excellent. So, in your motion, construction hours were fine how they were for you?
Seven, five, eight, three.
Yeah, it was seven to five and eight to three, right?
Yep.
And nothing on Sunday or holidays.
That is correct. As is standard practice.
Mm-hmm. So first we need to close the public hearing, correct, Mr. Chair?
I believe so, that would be appropriate.
So I would make a motion to close the public hearing for 97 Cross Street, 125 Cross Street, 430 Mopous Road, and 440 Mopous Road.
Have we already taken public comment?
Uh, we took public comment the last time around, you're welcome to.
Okay, no.
Ask again.
Be looking for a second on that.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, um, any further discussion on closing the hearing? All in favor, roll call vote, Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
And an eye for myself, excellent, public hearing is closed. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I would make a, a motion to approve the, um, decision as drafted for 97 Cross Street, 120, and approve, uh, 97 Cross Street, 125 Cross Street, 430 Mopous Road, and 440 Mopous Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, roll call, Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
And an eye for myself. Thank you. All right, plan endorsement for 324 Flat Hill Road. 324 Flat Hill Road. That would be the one we just did the stormwater permit.
Oh, yeah, so you just need to sign it, you guys can, I mean, you can do that on camera if you want, you can also do it afterwards.
Just the two of us aren't gonna be much good, anyway.
Yeah, but you, I mean, you may as well sign it so you don't have to come out of the house to do it again.
Okay, oh, so, we're gonna, he and I are gonna be able to sign everything we did?
Correct.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Ask a question?
Sure.
What's the, uh, at this stage, what's the appeal period, is there one for?
For stormwater, I think it's 20 days, similar to a special permit, but, you, I mean, if you follow all the conditions, you can move ahead at your own peril, and if someone decides to get ornery and appeal, then you just have to deal with that. Or, your, your client, such as it is.
All right, so that, it takes care of that, uh, minutes approval. So we've got the minutes from 1213, and the Flat Hill Road 1213, and the Cross Street 1213.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of 1213 2021, the minutes of 1213 2021 for 324 Flat Hill Road, and, I can't see the rest, the minutes of 1213 2021 for 97 Cross Street, 125 Cross Street, 430 Mopous Road, and 440 Mopous Road.
Sir.
Moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor, roll call vote, Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
And an eye for myself, excellent, thank you very much. Brings us up to committee reports, um, I'm gonna have to power up and log on to my email so I can get the committee report for the TC building, um, we've been reassigned, we've got a new charge and, got a new name, so, um, Agricultural Commission, we meet next week, uh, we didn't have, we, we didn't have a quorum last meeting last month, so we didn't meet, uh, we're on to Stormwater Task Force.
Uh, we have not met, Adam, we have a meeting in February, correct?
Uh, we meet next week.
Oh, okay.
Thursday.
Okay, well, that's good to know, so we, we meet next week, um, is that remote, Adam?
It's not anything yet.
I know Jeff had expressed concern at the last meeting about it being in person.
Yeah, I mean, we, we certainly can do remote.
Okay, so I would check, I would just request you check with him?
Mm-hmm. I will do that.
Open space.
Uh, we have not met.
Capital planning.
Capital planning, and I'm actually trying to pull it up, and I'm gonna have to find it, we prioritize all of the, um, items, um, and the master plan is within the top 10, um, we do not know yet from the, um, town manager where we stand with, uh, funding, but we have, uh, hold on one second, I'm gonna, I have it right here, um, so the overall of where the master plan lies is, it is number five, so we prioritized all of the requests, um, there is a, I don't know if you want me to run through the top 10, uh, but the first priority is engineering design for the public safety building, uh, due to a drainage issue, the second is a 10-wheel plow and sand, uh, truck replacing, replacing the 1994 map for the highway department, HVAC upgrades for the senior centers, three, construction of the Page Street, uh, bridge is number four, master plan is number five, uh, two-way radios for the highway department is number six, replacing the K-9 for the police department is number seven, uh, a Ford interceptor hybrid, um, for the police department, which accommodates a 10-year hiring plan, is number eight, repairs to the town hall is number nine, and a drainage design for the issue on Flat Hill Road is number 10, um, and Mount Marshall Park is just below that at number 11, so once we have an idea of what funding is available, uh, we'll know how many of those priorities can be, can be funded, total, we had 31 requests, and they were all prioritized.
You, you mentioned a bridge, I think, on Page Street, is that?
Is it?
At Arbor Street on Page?
Uh, I honestly couldn't tell you, Matt, uh.
That's the first I've heard of it. Excellent, is there anything else on capital planning?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much, um, Economic Development Committee, do we have anybody for that, MRPC or MHTC? I mean, I know you go as a.
I, I don't go to MRPC or MHTC, but, uh, yeah, we, we, Tanner was going to fill in for Economic Development, uh, we're still finalizing survey, we expect to try and get that out end of this month, in order to, uh, get people in the winter doldrums after they've gotten themselves settled up from holiday and whatnot.
Buffed up for winter. Excellent, um, so we don't have currently a representative for MRPC or MHTC?
Correct.
Okay, so I will circle back to TCP Building Design Committee, we're gonna have to change this committee report, because it's no longer TCPBDC, uh, at their last, at the last select board hearing on the 4th, I believe, last Tuesday, um, they gave us a new charge, so now it's the Town of Lunenburg, Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee charge. The membership and meetings is pretty much the same, um, so, section one, general, so I'll, I'll read this, "The Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, formerly the TC Passios Building Design Committee, will continue to work with any contracted architectural and engineering firms as they become available to review space needs for town offices, school uses, and community space at the building and/or land known as the TC Passios. Additionally, the committee will work to prioritize and/or rank the existing space usage requests, and explore a variety of design permutations at different estimated budget tiers that would meet the needs of the town according to those priorities. The committee may analyze, discuss, and investigate other town-owned buildings and properties in their recommendations as they deem necessary to fulfill this charge. This committee will prepare viable, cost-effective solutions to the select board that conform to all the town's existing financial and fiscal policies, and take into consideration any all-large-scale capital expenditures projected for the next 10 years." And as I said, the, uh, membership and meetings did not change much, but I did notice there was something here that, um, representations, members shall get approval of the committee prior to making statements, presentations, or joining activities on behalf of the committee, and I just wanted to clarify that that doesn't include my committee reports.
No, 'cause you're not representing the committee, I would expect that if you were to go to a, if you were to come to the planning board and give a presentation about the work of the committee, that would be different.
I get you, okay, I just wanted to clarify that, so, a, as far as I can tell, um, that's our new charge. We're also looking for dates for, um, our next meeting, two, two dates this month, and I have not, I've responded, they both work for me, I have not heard back. So that's, that wraps up committee reports, I believe?
That it does.
And, uh, so now we're, uh, we're looking, conservation probably wants some more GIS hours?
Yep, so we get about eight hours annually of, um, professional GIS work from MRPC, uh, the Conservation Commission has requested that the board grant them use of those hours in order to, uh, satisfy requirements on the trail grant that they've been working on, the mapping and marking program, uh, if you enjoy any of our numerous conservation areas, you may notice that there are some trail markers starting to show up, um, plastic discs, probably about the size of a coaster.
Mm-hmm.
They are there to help you stay on the trail that you intend to stay on, rather than wandering around and ending up in someone's backyard, not that I've ever done that.
The path not chosen?
Uh, so, this, this would assist in, uh, dialing in those maps and making sure they're available on the town website, uh, and helping to, uh, get folks out there, uh, putting these markers up.
Excellent, and this is the third or the fourth year in a row?
I think this is the third year you would transfer them over, I think it's an excellent use of those hours.
I, I agree, totally agree, um, however, is there anything that we could use those hours for at the Reservoir Road and Lemister Shirley intersection?
No.
Okay, that would be the only thing that I would hold them on?
No, I mean, what, what we will have is updates to zoning map if we go ahead with the water supply protection, uh, but that generally can. But that generally can be done through the CAI group who does our online GIS, and it's relatively inexpensive and is generally tied in with our map updates anyway, so that, it would be probably more difficult to have MRPC do those.
Very good. So I think we'd be looking for a motion and a second to.
That would be correct.
Allow Conservation to use our GIS hours.
And that's eight hours, correct?
Yeah, it's eight or 10. It's varied from year to year, if I recall. But it's at least eight and it's at most 10.
The only question that I have is where are we with the mapping of the stormwater infrastructure? And there was a question raised at our last stormwater meeting about the new software that MRPC, well, actually, it's not new, but the software that MRPC has relative to catch basins and capturing the data associated with the current status of catch basins. So I'm concerned that Rob Oliver, our DPW, may consume some of those hours.
Well, the planning board would have to approve any hour usage. The Mr. Mapper program or the Survey 123 application, I believe were originally created through MRPC's Transportation Group with partnership with their GIS group. And I think any training on that would be covered under the transportation hours since that's who helped develop it. I believe it might have been part of the UPWP.
It was originally, the stormwater structure identification and the software program itself was under the UPWP. But the question that I have is, at our last stormwater meeting, Mr. Oliver wasn't aware of that program and Heather actually, the town manager actually brought it up, so he was gonna investigate that and where Lunenburg is in that, in that whole area, you know, whether or not Lunenburg has completed the mapping, whether they've completed the mapping in Lunenburg.
The mapping, so the GIS mapping and the MRPC are separate. So our mapping is being done by CEI as part of the annual stormwater contract that they have.
I know that, but this is a GIS program that takes the coordinates of any stormwater structure and puts it into a software program and utilizes GPS coordinates to identify stormwater structures. So you're telling me that's outside of these hours?
Yes, because what essentially it is, is it's Survey 123, which is an app that you put on a smartphone or a tablet. And it uses the internal GPS locator on the device out in the field. And it tracks that information and it uploads it to ArcGIS. And so.
Okay, and you don't, and you don't believe that Rob is gonna need any training or do you have to utilize any of our GIS hours?
I don't believe the GIS hours would cover that training. I believe the transportation section over there, Pete Dougherty or one of the other guys over there would be able to walk him through that training program.
You mean Dan Dougherty, right?
No, isn't it?
No, it's Dan Dougherty.
Is it Dan? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so as long as, as long as it doesn't conflict with the stormwater aspect of it, I have no problem. The Conservation Commission's been doing a great job with the work that they've done. I've seen the trail markings, I've seen the information they've put up at the kiosks that were recently constructed. I think they're doing a great job. I just wanna make sure that DPW or the assessors don't have a need for these hours as well.
No, the assessors, they do their mapping through CAI.
The CAI.
And they have a contract with them for that. And I believe that the, again, the collector app, I don't think would, would need GIS hours.
Okay. So.
And we don't, we don't know whether it's eight or 10 hours that we'd be giving them.
We don't. I, you know, I think it's eight because I think it was 10 when I first started and they reduced it by two hours, somewhere in there.
Can I ask you, Adam, have we used them since you've been here?
We have not. Well, I shouldn't say that. I think we used 1.25 hours to have them create the APD map.
Very good.
Can we, can we do this in two steps? Can we do, you know, I, I just wanna verify with Rob that he's all set. Because I'd hate to give them to all one department and then find we short-suited another. So I'm wondering if I could do, you know, a motion for six hours, and then if DPW says no, we're all set, then I'd make another motion at the next meeting for the additional two.
And you can do whatever, however you'd like to do it.
What is everyone else's thoughts?
Give them the eight.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see, and that's another reason I ask if we've ever used them. And the APDC was five or six years ago?
Yeah.
Six, at least.
Yeah.
Maybe even seven.
Yeah, so I'm honestly not sure what we would do with them without having our own, like, GIS department, so to speak. I mean. We're kind of.
Well, they create data layers that are then incorporated to the CAI system, just like the APDC.
Okay, so I'd be willing to take a motion however you wanna form it, Paula.
Well, if Eric wants to make the motion, that's fine, too.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the GIS hours for the Conservation Commission, eight hours.
Now, if you specify eight hours and they actually could have 10, then I don't think they can get the 10.
I thought he said it was lower to eight.
That's my recollection.
I think if we just make a blanket statement, they can get whatever they can. I think.
Make a motion to approve the GIS hours for the Conservation Commission.
Paula, can you second?
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion?
The only discussion I have is, again, I'm concerned about the DPW, so, you know, I'd appreciate it, Adam, if you could just check with Rob.
I will check with Rob.
And secondly, there's a lot of services at MRPC that Lunenburg does not take advantage of, such as this, that I would really encourage that the town investigate and start pursuing some of these, these free opportunities that we forego. But I don't have a problem with the motion itself.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion, we'll have to do all in favor by roll call. Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent, that wraps that up. Meeting schedule, all board meetings are held at Town Hall 6:00 PM unless otherwise indicated.
I'll not be here on the 14th.
I'm not gonna be returning if I'm required to wear a mask.
Yeah, I'm not.
So.
I'm not wearing a mask.
Either, either we're gonna do fully remote or mostly remote, I don't know, but.
Well, that's fine. You are welcome to participate remotely.
Very good, appreciate it. I was not aware of that opportunity, but I am now. Thank you very much.
So I just wanna comment that having just recovered from COVID, I won't be going without a mask. So I am opposite.
I just got over COVID and I cannot wait to ditch the mask.
So this is my second time having it, and I don't want it again. So I have, I have adopted the mask as anywhere I go, so, you know, that's my position. And as long as we can do remote meetings, that's fine. But Adam, if you can verify that if we don't have a quorum present and, you know, at this case, if Eric and Matt both feel that they don't wanna attend with masks and I feel I don't wanna attend without masks, we're gonna have an issue of having a quorum present, and at that point, I think it makes sense just to do the meeting remotely.
No, and I have verified with the town manager, I was under the impression that the ability to get a quorum remotely had vanished with the closing of the state of emergency, and it actually will carry through April of this year.
Okay, so even if we don't, can we do the meeting fully remotely?
Yep.
Okay.
Up until April, you said?
Yes. And I, I think what will probably happen is I'll continue to come here in case folks want to come in person. But you all can attend remotely.
Okay, so our next meeting is Jan 24 and then two in February on the 14th and the 28th?
Yeah, like I said, I won't be here on the 14th.
Okay.
And depending on how the mask mandate shakes out and what Mr. Brenner's situation is, we won't have a quorum on the 14th.
Mr. Brenner's situation may be more amicable to remote participation.
It may be, and, you know, I.
I'm hoping to reschedule on the 14th. I just can't do the 14th.
Do we have anything already pressing for the 14th?
No, I don't believe we have anything filed for that as of yet.
So it may not be an imperative, but appreciate the forewarning?
Yeah, life would kill me.
All right, so ongoing items. Tonview Commons LLC.
Still no word. We got an update on the master plan from Mrs. Bertram, and I'm still working on the water supply protection stuff. I should have that for you guys for the next meeting.
Okay, super. And we're full circle, back to public comment. Anybody, anybody?
I do not see anybody.
Somebody is connecting to audio?
That has been going on for a bit now.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we don't block out anyone that wanted to say something. But if it's been going on, and it's still going on, so I think we're good.
I'll just check in and make share.
And while he's checking, we have, our next item is Board Comment Concerns, Discussion of Meeting Start Time. I'm comfortable with 6 o'clock.
As am I. Earlier the better.
Mrs. Bertram?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I completely, I completely agree. I think it was my idea to push it earlier. I'd much rather be done earlier than later.
Yes, yes, yes. You were always rocking the boat. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, I liked it. I liked it. Can't see my smile. Another thing, another reason I don't like these masks.
Mr., Adam, is Tanner okay with the 6 o'clock start time?
I have not heard that he is not okay with it.
Okay, and I thought that the last time we were in person, Matt, he didn't indicate an issue with that, correct?
No, I don't think that he has an issue with the 6 o'clock. I think he said in the summer it might be more challenging for him, but.
Well, honestly, in the summer, I don't necessarily mind going back to a later time because we have more daylight, but by 9 o'clock at this time of year, I'm in bed, so.
And they've dropped off, so.
Okay, great.
Okay. Any, any, any other public comment that's not gonna drop off? Any board comment?
Nope.
Nothing, okay, well, then I guess I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any further discussion about adjourning? Roll call vote, all in favor, Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you, folks, and have a great evening.
You, too.
Thank you all.
Recording stopped.
So I got, I got, I think I got.